How this is gonna work is a one-minute opening statement by each of the candidates, followed by a couple of longer questions, followed by some paddle questions, followed by a couple more questions, and now be it. By that time, everybody will have had enough and will wanna go home, or grab a beer, or like me bicycle home, or anyway, so here we go. So I think it's, I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna start in, geez, alphabetical order is a little bit hard with three Johns here, but we're gonna start, first of all, we're gonna go by alphabetical order by first name. And so, one minute, first person is Alan Bosak. Say your name and why you're running for this position.
I'm Alan Bosak. It's just like mowing a lawn. Not Alan, not the first time. I am an urban planner. I teach planning and transportation issues at the University of Washington. I've lived in Seattle for 20 years, the last 10 of them in Del Ridge, and I'm running because I'm sick and tired of seeing my friends leave town because they can't afford to live here. This is my first time running for elected office, but it is not my first time applying for this very position. Ten years ago, when there was a vacancy, I went and applied, and a lot has changed in that decade. I've gotten a little rounder around the waist, I've gained a few gray hairs, I've gained a PhD in planning, and our problems have gotten much worse. But what hasn't changed is what I've said about it in all that time. We need to fix affordable housing, and we need to do it in a way that is gonna bring everybody along for the ride. Affordable housing for people making the minimum wage, and we need to improve transit. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Next person is Bill Bradver.
Hi, I'm Bill Bradver. I'm a community activist, an artist in Repose, and a PCO in the 37th District. Prior to that, I had 20 years plus of experience as a consultant, working in a variety of industries, both through IBM and in my own practice. I live in the Central District with my wife and my two kids who are in Seattle Public Schools. I am running because I think we have a big issue here in Seattle, and that is we've lost control of growth, and that interests primarily around downtown and development have taken control of the city. I'm running so that we can take back Seattle, and that means reprioritizing our families, and our small businesses, and our communities, who've lost our voice to these other interests. And I think we have a far greater opportunity to return back to a way that we used to have here before, where communities had a say in how we were growing. We are now faced with all sorts of problems Alan elaborated on, but I don't think they're being fixed in the way that they should, and I believe I am the person who can help.
All right, thank you. So let's see, John Persick is...
Not by position, but by...
Not by position, we're going by first name, alphabetical order. Just mixing it up a little bit. You gotta be creative here, you know? So, go ahead. J O H N is before J O M.
Well, we're all J O H Ns, and I think John Grant is...
No, no, John Grant is J O M.
Oh, sorry.
So we have a lesson to not waffle now? Okay, so let's see, we're on to John Persick.
My name is John Persak, and I'm running for Seattle City Council, position number eight, citywide. And I'm running because I feel that we have been, we have become disconnected from City Hall, and that is evidenced by the fact that we have severe problems in transportation across the city. We have severe problems with affordability, both in terms of housing and finding livable wage jobs within the city that we can get to. We still have issues with police reform in our police department and public safety, and having all of our city parts of our city served. And also, development is a big, is a big theme, has been a big theme for a long time in our neighborhoods, and our communities are losing control of their sense of place. I have practical experience in finance. I spent many years working in credit unions, a waterfront federal credit union, as chair of the board. I have experience in small business. I was also on board of Central Collage Madison Market a number of years ago to help turn our business around. And I'm working long, short, and so I understand labor, and maybe you can see a little insight to work in Seattle.
Thank you, John. Up next, we have John Roderick.
Thank you. Let me assure you that I know the order of the letters in the alphabet. My name is John Roderick. I'm a musician and a journalist, and I live down here in Rainier Beach. I am a non-traditional candidate, but I'm very excited about the situation that Seattle is in right now. Obviously, we do have all these problems that everyone's referring to. We actually had them 15 years ago, and the progress that we've made in the last 15 years has delivered us onto this position where we sort of still have the same problem. I'm interested in the next 15 years of Seattle, and I'm very enthused about the growth that we're about to undertake and the city that we have the potential to build, which is a carbon sink, not just a carbon-neutral city, a city that has equal access for everyone, that has a vibrant transit network, and most of all, a vibrant culture. Seattle's incredible culture that keeps attracting people here, and it makes this one of the best cities in the world to live in. So I'm thrilled about the prospect of being on the Seattle City Council.
Thank you. John Grant.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Grant. I'm the former executive director of the tenants' union of Washington State. I'm running for office because in this, in this city, we're seeing waves and waves of people being economically evicted, and it's time that we actually stood up and did something about it. I have personally fought at multiple buildings to prevent the eviction of low-income tenants from this city, and it is not a coincidence that we see this feedback loop of developers buying interest in City Hall and then people being displaced. It is not enough to say that we just need to build more affordable housing, we need to do something to stop displacement. And it's not just housing, there are so many important and urgent issues that we are facing today. Do you think people have been fired through the Seattle Police Department for excessive force or racial profiling in the last decade? One. We can do so much better. We can do so much better as a city, and we have so much urgency that we are feeling in the streets, that we're feeling in our communities and our neighborhoods, that it's not being reflected at City Hall. I will bring that urgency, I will fight for you, I ask for your endorsement and your vote. Thank you.
And now, we have Lorena Gonzalez.
I'm Lorena Gonzalez, and I'm running for Seattle City Council, position nine, citywide. I want to thank you all for being here tonight, for giving me an opportunity to share with you a little bit about myself and my vision for the city of Seattle. I grew up in central Washington State as a migrant farmworker. I grew up in a bilingual home, two Mexican immigrant parents. I earned my first paycheck at the age of eight, and alongside my siblings and, and my parents, I threw, threw jobs and work-study and need-based grants, ended up going to community college, then WSU. I moved here in 2002 to go to law school, I lived in just about everywhere in the city, but now I live in West Seattle, and I'm the only attorney in both my immediate and extended family. I have committed my life, my life has been devoted to representing the voices of women, children, seniors, and working families. And I'm running for Seattle City Council because I think we are in a critical point in our history in this city, and I want to, I believe I have leadership and the experience and the skills to hit the ground running and address the issues that are challenges for us, like affordability, addressing social inequities, and of course, police accountability and public safety. Thank you.
And Tim Burgess.
Thank you very much. I'm Tim Burgess, president of your city council, and I'm running for reelection because I like doing good things for you and all the people of Seattle. My legislation created the city's Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs to welcome new Americans to our city. My legislation wrote the criminal wage death law to protect workers from dishonest employees. I was the key negotiator on the final passage of our groundbreaking paid-sick-and-safely so that workers could take care of themselves and their families. And last November, the biggest progressive win this city's seen in a long time. Seventy percent of you, thank you, seventy percent of Seattle voters passed the preschool measure. That is a huge win for our kids, for their families, and for our city as a whole. This is the kind of work that I want to keep doing for you and all of the citizens of Seattle, and that's why I'm here asking for your support tonight. Thank you.
So, we are going to actually have these answers limited to 45 seconds instead of a minute, because we have so many fine candidates and so many questions to ask. So...
Why not just limit it to 20 seconds and then...
Well, that, that, we'll do that when we get to the paddle questions. Okay, so, these are actually questions where we expect substantive answers. Okay, so, we're gonna start with this first question, and just to give you an idea of the order, we're gonna start with John the musician, right? We're gonna start with you and go down that direction to the south, and then we're gonna pick it up with John Persick and go north to Tim, okay? Just so you get an idea how this works. And we'll mix it up with each question. So, here's the first question. "Seattle is gaining an image of whites only related to employment, housing, and more to the point, higher incarceration rates. How and what can you do to change that image?" John?
Well, Seattle isn't gaining an image of whites only. Seattle has had an image of whites only for a long time. Seattle is a very liberal city, but we are very good at paying lip service to our liberalism, particularly when it comes to issues of social justice. This is a sort of a watershed moment in our history, where social justice is becoming a real idea in people's minds, that, people that formerly thought that they were good liberals, they're realizing that they have not been doing enough, that they have not had enough awareness. And that's a culture-wide phenomenon, and we're about to, we're about to enter an era where social justice plays a much larger role in every aspect of city policy. So, I would bring to the city council someone who is steeped in this way of thinking and would try and practice social justice principles in every word and deed. Thank you.
Okay, Alan, did I say that right?
Sure did.
Okay.
My wife and I moved down to Del Ridge a decade ago because we lived in Queen Anne, and as two people that grew up in Chicago, myself on the south side, and North Hollywood in my wife's case, well, Queen Anne just didn't feel just right, and Del Ridge sure felt a little bit a lot more like home. I think what we want to do in a city is have a place that welcomes everybody, and the way that we do that, and I'll beat my worst into the ground, version of second splash and bang. That's okay, I'll wrap up. The way we do that is by having everybody be able to have the opportunity to live and work and go to school in the same neighborhoods, and we need to start doing that by providing enough housing everywhere in the city, not just in my neighborhood. Welcome to come move down there, it's great, but everywhere else in the city too.
Bill?
Hi, I'm Bill Bradver, and I'm running for position nine. We have an issue in our, our racial problems are structural, and they are institutionalized in our police force, they're institutionalized in our economic system, and they're institutionalized in our school systems, and we need to accept that as a fact, and we need to aggressively change it. I agree, we are only paying lip service, and we need to fix things. I think the fundamental thing here is an economic issue, and we have a class system where we are creating, most of the jobs are being created here are high-end, high-tech jobs, and those high-tech jobs are displacing people out of our communities. My own personal neighborhood, when I moved, there was 30% of median income and 30% white. It is now over 50% of median income and about 50% white. This is the demographic change sweeping through the city, and we need, and it's not, it's not as simple as just building more housing, it's not as simple as creating more jobs, it's deeper than that.
Lorena?
When we talk, I think now is, is a different time in our city, and it is a different time in our country as it relates to race and being comfortable with being uncomfortable when we talk about race. And as a person of color myself, I fundamentally understand the burden that you carry as a person of color when you walk into a room and nobody looks like you. And we have to be okay as a society, we have to be okay as a city, to talk about that discomfort openly, and to make sure that every time we walk into a room as a policymaker to make decisions, that we are bringing that voice to the table, and that we are taking it seriously, and that we are crafting solutions that help the people who need it the most. And in our city, that's people of color who have, who are of low income, and others who are institutionally excluded from our city.
Thank you. Discrimination in Seattle and the disparity in how people are treated is not just about our city, it's a problem that has existed through multi-generations, and people of color understand that more than anybody else. And it is up to our city government to listen to the solutions and the issues that are brought forth. As long as we're not listening, then we can't even begin to solve those problems. And our city simply needs to open those doors and keep listening and to create solutions and partnership with those communities.
John Grant?
I think that it should shock our conscience that African-Americans are arrested at six times the rate of Caucasians, even though people commit crimes of the exact same amount. This is a huge problem, and has resulted in disparity in folks being able to access jobs, and I was one of the community leaders that led to the past, that worked on the passage of the jobs assistance legislation that broke down barriers for folks with conviction to get employment. And one of the first things that I would do if elected as a city council member is I would, I would expand those band-the-box protections so that folks can access housing as well. We did, we only took it as far as employment, and we didn't take it as far as housing. And until we address those systemic barriers to actually get folks into housing, we are continuing to see a segregated society.
And Tim.
I agree with one of the earlier speakers that said it's really easy to pay lip service to this issue, and that's why I fought so hard three years ago to fully fund the Nurse Family Partnership, a program that the New York Times says is the best anti-poverty program in this country, and Seattle became the largest city in America to fully fund the Nurse Family Partnership, which is a home visitation program for low-income, first-time moms. It's an actual on-the-ground strategy that solves poverty. That's the kind of work I do at City Hall. I don't just talk about it, I deliver results, and we make progress going forward.
All right, so, candidates, grab your paddles. Maybe can you hold on once? Anyway, so, I have a series of questions, just to sort of break things up here a little bit. And also, I want to say, I want to, I think that we should thank all the candidates, because, you know, running citywide is a different animal than running in, in each district. They're, they're not able to doorbell every single household in the, in the city, and so, you know, it's, it creates a whole different sort of mechanism of how you campaign, so I, and, and I think it's actually tougher, so I, I think we should thank these candidates for stepping forward and speaking. All right, so here we go. We're gonna ask about four or five questions, and then go back to more substantive questions. First question, "Do you support homeless encampments in residential communities? Yes, no, or waffle?" Okay. Second question, "Will you vote for the $930 million transportation levy? Move Seattle." Looks like there's some waffling. Let me see, all right. We're not gonna, you wanna, who is waffling? Okay, you got 15 seconds.
We absolutely need a transportation levy, but the city's not being honest with the people about the enormous backlog. The last time we went through this, we were about $600 million underfunded, this time we'll be about one and a half billion dollars underfunded, and we're kicking the can down the road.
There's one more waffler.
We need to continue to look at the package, you know, as it continues to evolve. I noticed in the recent provisions, funding for South Park Streets were actually cut by $8 million to $10 million, and that's, that's not addressing the disparities here in our city.
Okay, next question. "Do you support mayor appointment of school board members? Yes, no, or waffle?" Okay. I can't actually see what they're putting forward, so... I assume it was good, since people clap. Anyway, the next question. "Should the Myers wetland be preserved?" Looks like there was almost some question marks, but we'll go, go ahead, John, you get, you're the waffler.
Yeah, I think we need to look and see if there's opportunities to develop any type of housing on places that would not be damaging to the environment.
Okay. Next question. "Do you support initiative 122, the Honest Election of Seattle?" Who has the waffle? Tim, go ahead. 15 seconds.
I used to administer the city's matching fund program for public finance, voting to put it on the ballot, but this issue's not in front of us yet, and I don't know all the details. But I support public financing, I just don't know about this one.
Okay, next question. Oh, is there, there's only one waffle there. A no, well, no is a no. There's no waffling about a no, but there's waffling about a waffle, so... Okay, so, we're gonna go on here to the next, next question, which is, this is an interesting question from my point of view. "Do you support having bicyclists pay a registration fee for their bikes and have their license number visible at all times?" Okay, how many waffles are there?
I'll waffle so I can explain.
Oh. All right. Bill, you, you were waffling first.
That's right. Mine popped up first.
Go ahead.
I think the registration's a good idea, because just for stolen bikes, if we get, the city gets more populated, I think we want to be able to track people's bikes. I'm not sure if I like the idea of less than our license plate, because what does that even mean? Are we gonna start, you know, flagging people for bike crimes? I don't know.
We should.
We should, okay.
Okay, that was 15 seconds, John.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I understand that we want to have a bike culture here, and if we're gonna have a bike culture, and we're gonna share our roads, then there are rules that we have to follow, and, you know, we want people to license their guns, and so we should be, we should be encouraging people to license.
I agree.
I think as a general principle.
So, as a, as a, as a, as a biased person who rides my bicycle pretty much everywhere, I would have to say, this is just mine, is, yeah, I'd support a registration fee and having a license on my bicycle, but I'm not really big plates, or makes it not very cause of air resistance that way. I love the way that this panel is going. This conference is a great conversation.
I also just learned a lesson, if you waffle, you get to talk.
Yeah, so now we're gonna, I'm, I'm new to this political process, I'm gonna hold this up every time. All right, so now we're gonna go on to some questions where everyone gets to talk. This was gonna be a paddle question, but I actually think it's, it's, it's much more, it needs a more discussion of that. So, the question is, "Do you support linkage fees to fund affordable housing, and at what percent of, of, at what percent in terms of the fee, in terms of the, the cost of the, of the building construction?" And I'm gonna first have, everyone raise their hand, everyone knows what linkage fee is, and I might start with, I'm gonna mix this up again. Let's see, let's start with Alan. You got 45 seconds.
In general, I support linkage fees. The ones we have proposed today unfortunately don't go far enough because their requirement is only that people can maybe build affordable housing with the units that they're building, but they can choose to also pay into a fund. And really, we need the affordable housing with other, all the other units that are being built. My solution to all of this would to do, be to do mandatory inclusionary zoning instead, which forces all the new development to go along affordable end-market rate together.
Okay, that was good, you kept it to less than 45 seconds. Now, you know, I just realized, maybe everyone doesn't, does everyone know what linkage fees are?
No.
Yes, no, yes.
Yes.
Yes. It's certainly unfair to have one of the candidates explain it, but we'll just go on for a little while. Okay, so let's see, Bill Bradver, you're next.
I support the linkage fees, however, the way they're set up right now, the way they're proposed, I disagree with. I don't think linkage fees should be as much tied to the housing, unless that housing is perhaps above market rate housing, or market rate and above, because they can afford to pay it. I think we need to be, we have an issue here of demand, not as much as an issue of supply, and I think we are rapidly increasing our office space, and we're creating white-collar jobs from it.
My close would be down.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, so for example, Amazon, who added 20,000 jobs, millions of square feet of office space, they should be paying for that housing. Their, their people are coming in and taking our housing away from our people and displacing our community, and they're making a lot of money, and Amazon can afford linkage fee.
All right, the next person is Tim Burgess.
I voted last year to support linkage fees. We're gonna get a proposal from the mayor here in June that gives more specificity to that. I agree with Alan's comment, we should adopt mandatory inclusive zoning in Seattle, so that you have to build the units on-site or pay the cost to build that unit elsewhere, and the city's, the council's gonna be wrestling with this this summer very significantly.
And Lorena, you're next.
So I think we need to keep all options on the table, in time.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. I think we need to keep all options on the table, including the linkage fee, and I think when we're having this discussion, there's two things that bubble up in my mind. One is that the housing levy fund, which is up for renewal in 2016, I think we need to be supportive of that, because I think that's an additional piece to creating affordability in our city. The second thing with regards to developer fees, I, I think it's not gonna be absolutely necessary and needed to have developer fees, which is what linkage fees are. And, and I think that the question will be, how do we create a balance between those fees and, and the incentives that I think we're gonna need to address both the supply and the demand issue, but we're definitely going to need those, those developer fees to be supportive.
Thank you. John Grant?
I'm in full support of the maximum linkage fee, and I think what's important for folks to know is that the big difference here between the housing levy and the linkage fee is that on the one hand, the public pays, and on the other hand, the private sector pays. And linkage fees requires the private sector to create more affordable housing, and this is an area where I disagree with my opponent, Tim Burgess. When they had the opportunity to impose an incentive zoning fee in South Lake Union, the city's home study said that we could impose an $85 per square foot fee. Councilmember Burgess introduced a proposal that got us $22 per square foot fee. That left millions of dollars on the table that the private sector could have put into affordable housing. I am opposed to that, I think that we must seek the maximum out from the private sector to build more affordable housing, it can't just be borne on the public.
And John Roderick, you are the last one to talk about this.
Nope, John Persak is still there.
Oh, John Persak, oh. How did I screw that up? Okay, John Persak, sorry.
Yes, I am in favor of linkage fees, and yes, I think we will need to revisit the issues since the linkage fees being proposed currently do not go far enough, and I think the also, the issue that also needs to be addressed along with that is tax breaks that developers get for developing in our city. So, that's money on the table that we could be using for affordable houses and housing and other services.
Okay, that was good, thank you, everyone. How did I miss you? Okay, go ahead. Oh, no, no, I see, I see, no, no, you're fine. John, John Roderick is next.
I do support linkage fees in theory, but, but I feel like the housing problem is, is a systemic and holistic problem that we need to solve going forward. When I look at the South Lake Union area, I see thousands and thousands of units of ghost housing that didn't get built, because we were trying to apply punitive zoning measures on Vulcan as they were developing that area, and they didn't build 60-story buildings, they built a six-story biotech campus in the heart of our city. So, whenever we talk about punishing developers, we, we have to realize that there are consequences to that, and we have a housing crisis now, because 15 years ago, we didn't build the housing we needed, and I don't want to see us recapitulate that problem over and over. We need to build more housing, and we need to apply fees to big developments every opportunity we can.
Good, thank you. Okay, now another little more substantive question. Okay, now another little more substantive question. Here we go. Question is, do you support the recently implemented plan concerning downtown crime and that crime... What was it called? Triangle?
Nine and a half blocks.
Nine and a half blocks, thank you. Don't we need better, more accessible substance abuse and mental health treatment to really address public safety? So, let's start with Lorena.
The nine-and-a-half-block strategy, I think, works only if we can make it sustainable, and if it is coupled with something other than criminalizing people for being poor and for having chemical dependencies. So, if we are going to move forward on a strategy like nine-and-a-half, the nine-and-a-half-block strategy, it has to be coupled with figuring out how to divert people and how to treat the reasons why they are there. And without that human service component, it will not be sustainable, and we will just be incarcerating people rather than helping them figure out how to get the help they need and have a better life for themselves, and in turn, increase quality of life for the city.
So, we can put it right down on the table, so I don't get confused, so Bill, you're next.
Hi. I think the problem with that type of program is it's very punitive against... But at the same time, it is a problem that we have that localizes. And a lot of this problem is, it's like a balloon, and we squeeze it, and the problem goes from one place to the other. And we squeezed the balloon in the central area where I lived a few years ago, and we took it from one corner and pushed it out into other parts of the neighborhood. We do need to be addressing people, their fundamental needs. I'm a big fan of the LEED diversion program, for example, where people who are picked up have the opportunity to get into some treatment program, and I think that's where the solution lies. We don't nearly spend enough money. In my neighborhood, we've welcomed a mental health crisis facility center, where people can get the help that they need, and we need to be spending fun money on that, and I will support those types of programs.
All right, Alon, you're next.
I'm gonna agree with both other people applying for position tonight here, and say that generally, I'm supportive of this. But what we need to do is spend a lot more money on our human services. Our human services department is woefully underfunded, we are relying way too heavily on state funding that is getting smaller and smaller over time, while the needs for human services are getting bigger. We are losing some great social workers and counselors due to funding problems, both for mental illness and substance abuse, and we need to fund these programs a lot more.
Okay. John. I think the nine-and-a-half-blocks program would be a great program if Seattle were nine-and-a-half blocks square. But Seattle has thousands and thousands of blocks, and the nine-and-a-half-blocks strategy is basically the war on drugs by a different name, which we've been practicing for thirty-five fruitless years. So, I agree with everyone up here so far that we have a mental health crisis and a treatment crisis. I feel like every dollar we invest in our public schools is a hundred dollars we don't have to spend on youth jails and then adult jails. The problems downtown are endemic, but epidemic, but they're far greater than just busting low-level drug dealers who then don't qualify for treatment, and then they're back out on the street in a week. We've been chasing this since the Nixon administration. So, we need a comprehensive redo of our social worker structure, and we need to stop employing police as social workers, and keep people stuck in this cycle of hospital emergency rooms and police stations. It doesn't work.
John.
I more or less agree with everything that's been stated so far, and I think that the key issue for making sure that people understand that we do need more funding for human services is to not divert our attention toward things like civility laws, such as banning smoking in parks, which we know that will be used to target homeless and poor people and other sexual acts. Can't divert our attention from the problem, that won't make it go away.
And John.
I think the nine-and-a-half-blocks strategy is misdirected. You know, the reporter who actually told the story went back the next day to look at that same nine-and-a-half blocks after they arrested all those folks, and do you know what they found? There were just as many people who were committing crime and selling drugs as before. And it's almost as if the administration had, you know, doesn't realize that all of us have watched The Wire and know that that doesn't work. And I think that we could do better, and I'm a big supporter of the LEED program, which is a diversions program, and it had a sixty percent success rate at ending recidivism. And if we're gonna look at solutions that work, let's look at the ones that are statistically proven to do so. And so I think that we can do much better than this, and I agree with what's been said. This is... Seems like a throwback to the war on crime, and those wars disproportionately affects different populations, and I think we also need to acknowledge that as well.
Tim.
The nine-and-a-half-blocks strategy downtown is part of a comprehensive plan that goes from diversion programs and social services to arresting those individuals involved in violent crime and selling methamphetamine and heroin on our streets downtown, people involved in firearms violations downtown. That's why Tim Harris at Real Change is a big supporter of the strategy downtown. I'm one of the biggest advocates on the council for the LEED program and diversion. I made sure that the funding was increased for that, so it could spread from Belltown to throughout downtown, and Skyway, and White Center. So, this is not a typical war on drugs issue. This is a strategy that was carefully developed with all the social service providers downtown, with the police, with all kinds of folks who had input. It's a sound strategy, and it's a very effective strategy.
Okay, the next question is, with continual ballot measures for parks, pre-K education, transit, and now the King County ballot measure best start for kids, which are all worthy of support and consideration, isn't it time to provide strong leadership to address our inequitable tax system? And how would you do that in the city of Seattle? So, I'm gonna start with Alon, because he has the most interesting name.
We are hamstrung in the city by our ability to do something that is less regressive than the state mandates us to do. We should be working, as many people have tried to work, to get Olympia to allow us to have an income tax. We have the most regressive tax structure of any large city in this country. At the same time, we need to use the tools that we have, and unfortunately, levies are them, to fess up to the fact that we pay less than all of our friends who live in other major cities. And we need to pay for those more good things that we need to have, the things that we want to have, we want more of them, and we need to pay for them. And levies is the tool that we have right now, so we need to keep coming back to it.
Bill.
We have a problem that we can't fund everything with levies, because we're gonna hit our levy lid, and we need to have that changed, first of all. The other thing is, we have a fundamental...
What's the line, Tim?
I'm sorry. The other problem is, we have a fundamental funding problem in this city, where our city is structurally sped up, so that the only way we can make money is by growing and consuming. And if we're gonna be a sustainable city, we have to find another economic model that's not regressive and doesn't require us to be unsustainable from an environmental standpoint. I think we need to be looking at an income tax, and we have some very wealthy individuals in this city that have worked hard to keep us from getting an income tax, and I think we need to work hard to fight against that.
Oh, Lorena.
I'm not a tax lawyer, I know very little about taxes, but I do think that it's pretty clear that our tax system is incredibly regressive, and we do have the most regressive tax system in the country. But there are other things that we can do besides the levy, and of course, lifting the levy lid is gonna be important, that's still tied with the property tax, which again, is incredibly regressive. And I think that there are things that the city is currently using that we need to look at figuring out how we can make them robust. And some examples of that are things like a transportation impact fee, a commercial parking tax, and of course, we've heard a lot about a head tax as well. And there are other... Again, the point is that I think there are other ways that we can generate a stream of revenue that will allow us to use bonds and be able to create that revenue source that we need.
John Roder.
One of the most interesting things for me in running for this race and not coming from a normal political background has been learning about the tax... The taxing ability of the city and the taxing ability of the state, and the ways in which we are restricted here. It's been mind-blowing to me that we keep funding our schools as though maybe after two years, we won't have to fund them anymore because they'll be fine, or something. It's a crazy system that we have. We had a head tax, and we repealed that head tax, because downtown business interests didn't like it. But we have very wealthy companies coming into the city who have thousands and thousands of employees, and we absolutely should have a head tax to mitigate some of the impact that amazon.com and its like are having on the city. And we should absolutely try and get an income tax at the earliest possible convenience.
Okay, John Persak.
Seattle represents a major cornerstone in our state's economic system, and because of that, we have the cloud to go down to Olympia and encourage our legislators and develop a political will to change our tax structure, so that we can do things in our city to make taxing more equitable. Having said that, our city also needs to be more fiscal in the types of things that it bonds for. For example, you know, the expensive waterfront park is something that we never got to vote on. The massive investments for upscale development in South Lake Union, we never got to vote on that. And the attempt to build a sports stadium, that would have displaced jobs, we never would have been able to vote on that either, but yet that takes up body capacity, the ability to fund the things that we do need.
John Grant.
I agree with much of what's been said, I support an income tax, a state income tax as well. But I think one thing again is, you know, how can we get the private sector to contribute towards our public infrastructure? Because that could free up other public resources to go towards other things. I'm a big supporter of development impact fees. We are seeing some of the biggest growth in the city, and we are just, again, leaving money on the table when we could be imposing fees on developers, so that the surrounding infrastructure for our city, the sidewalks, the roads, the signs, everything, gets included in the increased value that these developers are gaining from their developments. So I think that that is one way that would be revenue neutral, or that would be a tax-neutral way on the public to actually create more funding for these services.
Tim.
So, I agree with a lot of what we've heard, we have a terribly regressive tax system in Washington, and I hope the legislature passes the capital gains tax that's been proposed and is being considered right now. The city might have options to do that as well, which we are exploring. But we can all talk about this. Come to my committee this next Wednesday at nine-thirty in the morning, and we're starting a series of conversations about this very issue. Because the way we will influence Olympia is by building a groundswell of support, getting the facts, getting the evidence, bringing the experts in, starting to talk about it, so we can persuade people that we changed the system, because it's not working today.
So, we're gonna go to the ballot questions, but first of all, you know, listening to all these candidates, I hope you are impressed, because these people, obviously, you have really studied up, you know the issues, and you're willing to put yourselves on the line to talk about how we can resolve many of the problems in our city. So, I think you deserve like an intro round of applause right now. All right, so, get your paddles out, and here we go. And the waffle is only a five-second waffle, and actually, it's not even very tasty, because it's a stale waffle, so... I always get... There's this little Swiss store down the road, from down the street from where I am, and they have Belgian waffles, and I always get the day-old waffles, but you have to make sure you microwave it before you eat it. Anyway, okay, so, here we go. Do you support building apartments or condos that do not have off-street parking? All right, I think we have two... Three waffles. Lorena, ten seconds.
Well, a waffle, right? If I go an extra five seconds.
Well, I get the waffle, too.
Very generous, ten seconds. I think when we're talking about off-street parking, I do think that there needs to be some requirement for off-street parking in some areas of the city. But I also think that we need to start... We really need to start discouraging people from being so hard-dependent in the first place. And so, we really need to be looking at how to discourage so much auto-dependency in our city.
All right, that's a long waffle. Okay, who else had a waffle this time?
John.
John, John Grant.
So, real quick, I just think that we need to look at the existing transit in the surrounding area, so that we can encourage folks to use that transit, and in those situations, it may make sense to limit parking.
And John.
Depends on the neighborhood, and depends on transit service that's currently available and could be available in the future.
Okay, I'm not gonna make up a question, because these are not made up, but I'll make up a question, see if I can phrase this right. Do you support... This probably might get me in trouble with everyone. Do you support going back to the ballot this year with a proposal to repeal the twenty-dollar car tab and put that money into expanding the Orca discount card? Yes or no, or waffle?
Repeal the Tim Einman thing and...
No, it's not the Einman thing. All right, I guess I need to... I actually, I thought about this, because of what Lorena said. So, you all know that we all, all of us passed this transit measure last November, and it included, actually, putting a lot more money into buses, which we need, right? And also included funding an Orca discount for low-income people for Orca cards. But also, it raised our car tabs sixty bucks, but then it had a provision that it would have a twenty-dollar rebate for low-income people. You all know this, right? And that twenty-dollar rebate is costing about seventeen dollars per rebate for a total of thirty-seven dollars. So my question is, is that enough explanation?
Yeah.
Right. My question is, would you support going back? Because I think it has to be done through another ballot measure or a vote of the people, because it was put through by a vote of the people, repealing that portion that does the twenty-dollar rebate, and instead, funneling that money into Orca pass discounts? Yes or no?
Breakfast.
Okay, who is a waffling? Okay, John.
How much?
We'll give him ten.
Okay, so, real quick, part of the reason why that fee is so expensive is that they're using Wells Fargo to administer it, right? Why don't we have a municipal bank?
You were a waffling. Tim is a waffling, okay.
Very complicated, very technical. I think we were shocked at what that cost was, we just learned about that earlier this week in a committee meeting, and we're definitely looking at that issue.
All right, well, basically, he says it was complicated and they're looking at it. Okay, who else was a waffling?
Let's take a look at restructuring, how that tax is collected from low-income folks in the first place, and eliminate those cards completely.
Who else is a waffler who wants to talk about this? Alon, Alon.
Yes. Well, the heart of your question is that we are wasting money, want to see what the actual ballot measure proposal would be, and whether that saves us that money. We need the funds for transit, we need to do better to give people access to transit and reduce fares, but let's see what the actual measure looks like.
Any other wafflers?
I'm waffling, because I think it's a good idea, but I would say if we're gonna go through the effort of putting on something like that, we should garner a little more revenue, and we should relieve the pressure on the low-income people.
And Lorena, are you a waffler?
No.
No? Okay, well, those are great answers for rather complex sort of... Okay, well, those are great answers for a rather complex sort of unthought-through question, but, all right, more, more of a yes or no. Do you support creating a public internet utility similar to Tacoma's Click or City Light? Okay, very good. That's really, I guess I'm showing my biases. And do you support the establishment of a Seattle Public Bank on the model of the Bank of North Dakota?
Yay!
And we have, Lorena, are you voting?
Uh, yes. Give me a minute.
But that is, are you voting yes?
I'm being thoughtful.
Oh, being thoughtful, we're all being thoughtful. Tim, you're the waffler though, go ahead.
Again, very complicated and I just don't know the issue that well enough.
All right, do you support the annexation of White Center North High Line? Okay, no waffling, very good. Do you support having the city council fund or use any sort of public money or public bonds for a new sports arena or to pursue a hockey team or to try to get the Supersonics back or whatever? Yes or no? Okay, good. We're zipping through this. Do you believe the city should require our police, fire and other city employees to live in the city?
Or incentivize them.
I took out the incentivize, that's too expensive. There's a lot of waffling, so we'll start with Lorena. 10 seconds.
First of all, I don't think that we could legally do that. It would be a violation of the interstate commerce. Sorry to get really woke in you guys for a minute. So I don't think that it's a feasible option. I do think we need to create some sort of tiered preference perhaps that would address those legal issues.
Who's next? Who's the next waffler person? Bill?
Technically, we can't do it, but I would make it a deal with the police union that if they allowed us to increase hires locally, that we would hire more police officers.
Go ahead.
Instinctively, I loved the idea and thought it was a great idea until I found out it was illegal. Then I did a bunch of research on it and it turns out, the only thing that really has a profound effect on police outcomes is better training. It doesn't really matter where they live.
And any other wafflers?
Tim. Washington law specifically prohibits that kind of a requirement, but I would favor incentivizing or coming up with some agreement with the police unions that would allow that and encourage that.
Okay, so, that gets us, were you waffling too, John? You don't need to, just say he was waffling. That's good, that's a good answer. Okay, so, let's go on to the next question. Because this actually feeds, this is a good segue. So, segue, remember when that first term came into being? That was thanks to Ronald Reagan and he started, anyway. So, what would you do to increase police accountability? It's not, put down your paddles. This is actually a more of an informed discussion. Actually, the whole discussion has been informed, but the question is, what would you do to increase police accountability? And we will start with candidates for position eight. So, we will, not with you, we'll start with John Grant first. Yeah, 45 seconds.
I think the most, there are so many things that we need to do to correct the problems with the Seattle Police Department, but first I need to say that it is an incredibly hard job as a police officer, to be a police officer, and that really needs to be respected. But having said that, we are under consent decree and as I mentioned before, there's only been one police officer that's been found, that's been fired for excessive force. Now, my opponent, Tim Burgess, was the chair of the Public Safety Committee for four years. That was the same year that John T. Williams was shot, four seconds after the officer left his vehicle. And in that, in that era, there was zeros of officers that were found having excessive force. We must change the disciplinary system so that there's civilian oversight of our police officers when there's excessive force and racial profiling.
Okay, and the next one would be John Roderick.
I'm really encouraged by the Office of Professional Accountability and I think we need to fund it more. I think we have a, we have a police, we have a police situation in this country and Seattle has been unfortunately, one of the leaders in a police department that did not reflect the values of its own community. We've been waiting for the police to reform themselves for 20 years and watching them try. The police have gotten really good at writing press releases about how they are reforming themselves. And that's what we're, I mean, and I'm seeing real reform now and it's encouraging, but for instance, during the May Day protests, we saw a situation where, these happen routinely every year and they're always the same, and yet the police act surprised every time. They need to start adopting a, the idea that they are there for public safety and less there to maintain order. And those two situations in our public world are very different.
John Perser.
Many people in our city feel that we've been given a false choice between being protected by law enforcement and having our civil rights respected. And that's a false choice and the way we get out of that false choice is for communities to actually have input directly on how their communities are policed. We need to expand the community policing program and we also need to talk more about reform at the bargaining table because that is the appropriate place for dealing with police officers as workers who are stressed in our communities who have a very difficult job to perform.
Tim.
Again, the difference between talk and actually doing something. I was one of the first council members to ask the Department of Justice to investigate our police department. I passed legislation giving more power to the civilian auditor, more power to the Office of Accountability. It was my legislation last year that got rid of a 35-year ban on the police chief hiring command staff from outside SPD and that's what Chief O'Toole has done. So I think we're making great progress. We do have a long way to go. I used to be a Seattle police officer. I know that it's tough to do that job, but it can be done successfully. It can be done while protecting constitutional rights. It can be done while being in touch with communities and policing our city the way we all want it to be. We all want to be safe. We all want our kids safe. That's what we deserve and that's what we're working for in Seattle.
Okay, Alon.
We need to do three things, and I agree with everything that's been said so far, but we need to do three things. We need more local training to explain our local sensitivities and who we are as a community. We need to focus on community policing and because we do understand how difficult of a job we're asking our officers to do, we need to stop being the city with least police officers per capita and hire more of them so their jobs get a little easier.
Bill.
I agree. I think first of all, Chief O'Toole is doing a great job. I think we are making changes, but we are seriously understaffed. We have as many police officers as we have in the population and 100,000 more people. At the same time, I think we need to be more aggressively ensuring that we are getting the police that are misbehaving out of office. We need an aggressive discipline process in trying, in the negotiation next time we lead with the police officers. And we need to make sure that that leads to not only criminal charges, but removal from the force. We need to really show that we're making change. Secondly, I do think we need to change the nature of the relationship between the police and our citizens. There's a massive distrust. I want to see our police force become community service officers unarmed. I want to see unarmed police officers. If they're gonna be in the high schools or if they're gonna be escorting our protest marches, it should not look like we're in the middle of the Iraq War.
So, as a civil rights attorney, this is the area of law that I actually practice and I have been engaged in holding police officers and municipalities accountable for police misconduct since 2005. And I, as I mentioned, I've worked on holding cities, including Seattle, accountable for excessive force and racial biased policing. This is an issue that is incredibly important to me. And I think, you know, the question is, is how do we hold police accountable? Well, by holding them accountable and making sure that we have people on city council like me who are prepared and experienced in asking SPD leadership the tough questions to ensure that we're not only being protected in our communities and served in our communities by public servants, who I believe the vast majority of them are well-intentioned and do a good job, but also making sure that they do that in a constitutional manner.
Okay, so, we're gonna have about three more questions and the first two are with your paddles. And the first question is, do you support having Shell homebase its drilling equipment and drilling ships here to drill in the Arctic? There's a couple of waffles, okay, Bill?
I absolutely do not support it, but I think the issue is, it's not just how much are they ported here, but we have a president that is leasing rights in the Arctic. Us shutting down our port does not mean that it's not gonna go somewhere else. I think we need a more, we need a concerted effort with all the other ports up and down the coast to prohibit that thing from getting anywhere.
Okay, John Perser.
I do not support more drilling. I understand that climate change is a huge issue we need to tackle immediately, but I disagree with how the city handled this issue and the city missed an opportunity to come to terms with the port and develop a relationship with the port to not make these decisions in nature.
Okay, so, I was actually expecting everyone to say no for that because my next question was going to be, and it still is, do you support, let's see if I can phrase this correctly, enabling low-income people to drive more and use more petroleum? Okay, I guess I have to explain this a little bit more. This is, I told you I'd get in trouble. Yeah, we're gonna get to closing statements. So, actually, this is my own statement, but it's odd to me that on the one hand, we say we don't want Shell homebased here, but on the other hand, we are actually encouraging low-income people to drive cars by having this car tab rebate. Because when you think about that, it means cars are so expensive. You have to pay for insurance, you have to pay for the cars, you have to pay for car loans. We should really be putting that money into transit. So anyway, that's my little personal diatribe, but John, you ought to run next time. Yeah, this is more fun. Okay, so, okay, so this is a closing statement along with a question, because I think it wraps it up together. You get a minute each.
No questions from the floor?
So, the question is, how do you plan to improve the health and quality of life for everyone in our city? And that is obviously combined with a closing statement. So, I think we'll start, we'll start with Tim and just go down the table.
Thanks very much for coming out tonight and caring about your city. I'll address quality of life by keeping doing what I've been doing. And that's why I've won the endorsement of Senator Pramila Jayapal, one of your senators, State Representative Steve Burquist, Joe Fitzgibbon, Eileen Cody, the mayor, Dow Constantine, social justice labor unions across this city, community activists and organizers, progressive leaders who want to get things done, who don't just want to talk about issues, but actually want to make progress, actually want to address decades of racism and institutional oppression of people, evil structures that hold people down. That's what I'm doing on the city council, that's what I want to keep doing on the city council, and I hope you'll help me do that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Tim. John Grant.
I'm running for city council because we have an opportunity to have a true progressive majority for the first time in decades. And the $15 minimum wage can just be the beginning. The city of Seattle can be a social incubator, an incubator for social justice that could spread across the nation if we just really lean. Now, we have a choice and I think that what we have seen time and time again is that there is too much influence of private developers and corporations in city council. We're seeing it as we are watching entire communities being displaced and it's the very same policymakers that are being put into power by those developers. I endorsed Initiative 122, the fair elections initiative, to get money out of our politics. And I have also taken, and I've also taken a pledge not to accept any donations for my campaign from any corporation or any developers, so that people know where I stand and that I stand with you. I've been fighting for the last 10 years for this community. I will fight equally as hard on city council. I ask for your vote, I ask for your endorsement and together we can make it happen.
John Perser.
Thank you and sorry I wasn't able to stand. I have a little issue with my foot here, but I hope that everyone can hear me nonetheless. You know, I believe that when our city voted overwhelmingly against conventional wisdom to go to a districting system in the first place, it was an expression that people were a bit fed up with business as usual in city hall. And so we now have a new crop of new candidates that are running and I think that that represents the true change that we needed at city hall. Issues like affordability, the ability to get around our city, whether it's public transportation or in our vehicles, the ability of neighborhoods to have a say in the kind of development that goes on in their community, and also to continue to reform our police force. Those are the things that people are very concerned about. I can bring my experience of living here for over 25 years and working on Seattle's waterfront as a labor union member and bring that change. Thank you.
John Roderick.
Thank you. I agree that the districting of, the redistricting of the Seattle City Council is very exciting and these jobs that we're applying for, the citywide position is a new job. It's a very, it's a very thrilling job. Now, I'm new to your community of activists, but I'm a leader in my own community of arts and culture downtown. And my community is really a canary in the coal mine in this city. If the artists can't afford to live in Seattle, then what you're building is a place where people work and a place where people sleep, but it isn't a city and it isn't a culture. None of the questions tonight dealt with arts and culture, but that's really why people are moving to Seattle and it's at the center of the kind of city we're trying to build, not just a city that has affordable housing and transit, which we do need, but a city that encourages and embraces its arts culture, that has arts in the schools and that raises the bar for cities around the world as an example, as an example of what a city can be, which is not just a hive, but a community.
Thank you. Alon.
We are the fastest growing city in this country. And while we embrace all the good things that come with being the fastest growing city in this country, we have to make sure we put a there there, keep the there that we like and make sure that we're putting in all the amenities that we don't have. We don't want to just live on boxes on top of each other. We want to save the bowling galleries and the roller skating rinks and make sure that people like John can support all the artists and musicians that live in our city. Our problems are planning problems. We have to fix affordable housing, we have to fix transit. We have a couple of great lawyers on the city council, a CEO, a small business owner, but it's been a while since we've had a planner in the city. I bring the experience for affordable housing and transportation. I hope to get your endorsement and your vote. Thank you.
Bill.
All right, thank you for listening to us all tonight. I'm running because we have a serious problem in this city and that is the people have lost their voice. They've lost their voice to a city hall which creates a housing, affordable housing committee in secret, which is mostly staffed with developer and development interests. We have a city hall that has created, our neighborhood's been so small and it's no longer enforcing and supporting neighborhood and community groups. We have a city hall which is protecting interests of downtown and spending hundreds of millions of dollars in investment for University of Washington and Amazon and other large high-tech companies, biotech companies that don't necessarily need their support, but we have small neighborhood businesses and we have immigrant communities that are not being supported. We are pushing forward a basketball arena which has over $700 million in public subsidies associated with it. The rules of the game have to change. The citizens of Seattle have to take back Seattle.
Again, Lorena Gonzalez, Seattle City Council, position nine, citywide, ask for your endorsement and ask for your vote. And I opened up tonight by saying that I'm running for Seattle City Council because I think we're at a critical period in our history. And I'm... And I believe, again, that I have the leadership, experience, and skills to address the significant challenges that are facing our city. When we talk about affordability, we have to talk about who we are creating an opportunity for. Are we creating an opportunity for developers or are we creating an opportunity for working people that make up the city? Now, I think, I think that there is a way that developers can be a powerful partner in crafting a solution on affordability. But it is gonna take a very strong voice in city council to ensure that the right balance is struck. Now, it's easy to talk about how we help our most vulnerable communities in the city of Seattle, but I'm telling you, I wasn't born and raised in the city of Seattle, but I was born amongst poverty and a lack of opportunity. And that's the perspective that I'm gonna bring into city hall and I think it's a perspective that hasn't been represented in city hall and I commit myself to being a champion for working people, for working families, and for other underrepresented communities and for each of you in this room.
Alright, thank you. So, before we close for the night, I wanted to say a couple things. First, thank our timekeeper. You know, I thought that ringing bell was in his computer, but actually, he's actually ringing it himself, so very good. If you want any more information about my sort of strange ways of thinking, you could blog, I blog in the Huffington Post, so just go to John Burbank Huffington Post or John Burbank at the Economic Opportunity Institute. Having said that, I think, you know, I learned a lot today from these great candidates and I thank you for stepping forward, sort of being so informed and for you all being leaders of the city, whether or not you get elected to city council, so thank you very much.